My name is Salvatore DiMigo from Peter Gunn Auto Sales, DiMigo Group LLC, 205 North Avenue, 145 Y. I'd just like to ask why we were removed from the agenda today?
The state is still, as of April 29th, and I assume still today, in a situation in which they have a hold injunction on cannabis retail stores.
So what does that have to do with this?
So I'm waiting at this point for resolution at the state level.
They have made a resolution. They're opening up all applications October 4th to everybody. That includes ROs and MSOs, big corporations, that when they do apply and get the license, which they will, they're going to steamroll over small, local entrepreneurs like myself. And that's a fact.
You asked. I told you why.
Okay. What's the next step moving forward? Can we get put on an agenda for the next meeting or?
Ken, I apologize. I wasn't aware that was brought up to agenda.
Neither did I, I mean.
Respectfully, we should have reached out to you if that was the case, so I apologize on behalf of. At some point, you know, we can't just go egoing back and forth, get it on the agenda. And a lot of the era to make a decision, but the stall is really not necessary.
What exactly do you want to talk about?
Me?
Right. I think it's important that we hear everything once again beside if there's going to be public, any public concern for this.
Well, there would be a public hearing.
You have to vote for a public hearing.
Yeah, you would, yes, we would.
That's what was on the agenda for tonight, to set a public hearing. So if your concern is you want to get more input from the public.
Then we cancel it.
The public hearing is the way to go. I'm a little, I think, Darrell, I don't want to speak, well, your email you sent to me, in addition to the injunction, you were concerned about, the board has not really discussed the details that should be understood before a change is made. I don't know what details you're referring to. However, when I, in the town of Aranacoye, which never opted out, so they passed in August of last year in their zoning court, in their zoning code, they, the town of Aranacoye allows cannabis, adult cannabis, both dispensaries and on-premise consumption sites in their manufacturing district. I don't know if they also have an industrial zone, but probably the equivalent of industrial zone. And then plus, they have various requirements as far as the time, place, and manner of operation, which localities can do. So if these are the kind of details, here is, give one, take one, Jerry, and give one to the mayor, one to the car. This is what Aranacoye did. If those are the kind of details you were referring to. If there are other details, let me know.
And me as well.
These are types of things.
Okay, see, because I was confused.
I'd also be interested in what Penfield has done. They too must have set something up, correct?
Not necessarily. The village of Fairport, you know, not every municipality that didn't opt out has adopted, you know, regulations of the time, place, and manner. There's nothing in the village of Fairport. I didn't look at every code for every town or village in Monroe County that has, that did not opt out. I did look at Aranacoye, and lo and behold, Aranacoye did something, you know, so.
Well, that is one of my concerns, to go forward with the resolution just to allow a retail establishment without, or putting something like this in after the fact. I'd rather have something like this.
But it's the chicken, it's not quite like the chicken and the egg. But this only, these kind of regulations only come into play if you in fact opt back in. That's got to happen first. Otherwise, this is irrelevant.
Okay.
So why even go through this unless the decision is made whether you're opting, opting back in again? And these can have, these could run on a parallel track. You could do local laws, you know, a local law A to opt back in, and then a local law to adopt regulations of the time, place, and manner of operation.
Okay. Well, that gives a little bit more clarity, because at first it was in my mind, I could say, we are adopting a local law allowing establishments. Okay. Now you commit after that, and now you set up regulation. Why aren't they set up? Most laws, I would think, have as part of them more detail. But that's, that was my, that's one of my thinking thoughts.
Well, it's two separate, it would be two separate local laws.
So there would not be.
Because. Again, you know.
Why?
I haven't taken any polls, but as I've said before, I don't know if there's three votes to opt back in. So it's like, why, you know?
Plus, well, that's what's happening. Plus, there's a lot more than just the five votes that are elected, because there's a public concern as well. But I, I just, this was one of the main things right there.
But I'm sorry to interrupt, but you said two separate local laws, just for clarity, they can be done at the same time, in the same meeting, or kind of parallel track. So it wouldn't, it would be a gap period that said, hey, you allow retail sales, and it's allowed less for a couple of months until you can pass another local law that can be done at the same time.
Which was kind of what I was, that's one of the reasons why there was nothing like this. It's just a law that says, yes, we're going to have it. So somebody applies, where do they apply for? And then all of a sudden, you come along and set up parameters and you name up a law. So.
So the question is, what are we putting on the agenda for this?
We certainly can put it on the agenda for next meeting, which would be a public hearing.
Huh? Are you here?
I am here.
Well, it wouldn't be the public hearing at the next meeting.
No.
Because you got to take a resolution to set the public hearing.
We can do that now?
If that's up to this board. I gave you the.
Do you want to do it?
Ken, just remember, and remember what this, we got to also remember what the conversation was. I think we get confused on this board. At least the last meeting I was at, I missed the last one. I was getting hammered about the health of this, and that's not what we're talking about here. We didn't pass the law. It's legal. So any other thing that I'm open to discuss, but if you're going to talk about the health of it, someone who smokes this is doing it, whether you have a shop in the village or not. So it's my opinion.
Can I, may I speak? It's giving access for adults to safe recreational cannabis. That's regulated, highly regulated, adult use only. And I know that the last workshop, a lot of kids were on discussion, but that's a totally different discussion. This is 21 years or older adult use. And this is for people like myself, the community, if they want to choose to not alcohol, or tobacco, or those other choices, they can go and get a safe source of cannabis for themselves, for the pets, medical use. And it's tested and regulated, and it comes from a licensed cultivator or processor globally, all from New York.
Correct. That does not mean that this village necessarily has to have a law that allows it at this particular point. We cannot opt out. We have opted out. There are quite a few communities across New York State that have opted out. And you are here asking us to opt back in. Doesn't mean that we have to.
Oh, but I'd like to go through the, you know, the formal process of trying to opt in again. You know, I'm not trying to stir up stuff, or, you know, I have a full-time job.
Love to have, and we will have, I'll ask for a resolution to have a public hearing. Because it's not just the five of us that should be, the five of us that vote, but we need to hear also what the public has to say.
And I totally agree.
So it's a public hearing, a resolution, they have a public hearing.
They're not going to cancel it.
Pardon?
They're not going to cancel this one. Huh? Oh, he has bad ears.
Okay, well, we're still here under public comment. Go ahead.
Okay. Do I have the floor? Can I?
Hey, you got a few minutes on anyone else who wants to speak in conference, because this is a public session.
Okay, I'm just going to make a couple, just a couple of comments on a pamphlet that I put together for you guys. You know, 75% of the local access tax goes straight to the village. Based off of my conservative projections, you know, the village stands to take over 115,000 in the first year. That's based off of 3.6 million in sales. And that's easily attainable based off of the numbers that the rest of the 23 licensed retail stores are doing right now. And since June, total sales of, since June, from January to June was $33.4 million. And from June to correct, it was $30 million. So, you know, the financial gain to it is there. But the main thing that I'm focused on is, you know, the benefits of the license, the recreational adult use cannabis, quality control, consumer safety, tax revenue, job creation, reduces crime activity, public health, social equity, and research opportunities continuing forward for safer products. And just a little background on myself. I graduated from Grease Olympia in 2013. I established myself, successful business owner in Rochester, New York. I started my journey at a young age, started working at 15 at Tom Walls in Grease, Grease Ridge Mall, with a solid foundation in business administration at FCC. I gained valuable experience working for various local businesses, including, you know, Tom Walls, Dunkin' Donuts, and a local furniture store in the city Rochester, which was new to you, Disco Furniture. My involvement with Peter Gunn Auto Sales has been particularly significant. I joined the company in 2015, and now I own 50% ownership in the company. And under my leadership, the business flourished and achieving an impressive annual revenue of over 12 million a year. My father, Peter DiMigo, founded the company in 1976 and was one of the first registered importers in Finger Lakes region. We're now one of 120 registered importers in the country, and we deal directly with this DOT, so very familiar with strict conformances and confineses. And on top of being one of 120 registered importers, we're a used car dealer and a retail dealer, wholesale and retail, and we sell to all the local new car dealers around the town. Bob Johnson, Westford, Cavallero, Spur, Basil Ford, Royal Chevy in Cortland. And with my father's guidance, I became a key contributor to a successful business. In addition to my accomplishments in the automotive industry, I ventured into real estate over the years in my personal renovations of five properties and two current properties that I own, one in East Rochester, a rental, and a rental in Florida. My journey towards, my journey towards success has not been without challenges. The impact of my mother's incarceration on marijuana charges during my formative years, coupled with her struggle with alcoholism, greatly affected my upbringing. This adversity made it difficult for me to concentrate on studies and personal growth. Furthermore, the tragic loss of my cousin to fentanyl in 2018 added another layer of grief and hardship. But that didn't stop my determination to propel myself forward, engaging myself to overcome these obstacles and forge a path of success. So that's just a little, that's just a little bit about myself. So, and I am, I understand what the organization and the last workshop meeting, I'm not against them. I'm actually, would be a contributor towards them. I want safe products in our community. I know what it's like to lose somebody from fentanyl overdose. I know what it's like to watch parents lose kids. It's not good. It's not okay. And I had many opportunities to leave the state of New York. You know, I highly questioned that in 2018 when my cousin died. I could have took my business and moved to Florida, went to work anywhere else. I'm young. I had the rest of my life out of me. But I decided to stick here, work hard, put my head down, and make something of myself. And that's what I did. And the state deemed me acceptable to have a recreational license. They accepted me under the card program. They think that I'm, you know, a great candidate to be one of the first retail stores in New York, and I want to do good with it. So I have the right intentions moving forward, and I do everything to, you know, help this community out. You know, I'm born and raised in Rochester, and I want to do the right thing. The money's great and all, but money doesn't motivate me. You know, doing the right things for my family, they can all contest here tonight. I mean, I do things without question to help people. I mean, I don't ask anything in return. I just do it because that's my personal satisfaction out of life. So try not to get jerky up here. Already teared up once looking at some of these pictures that I put together for you guys. But thanks for the time. I look forward to the next meeting. Thanks, guys.
Let me ask a question before you stop. Is your mother the one who gets the license because they were given to those who?
So if you were affected, if somebody was charged with marijuana charges, and you were in the household and affected by it, you could apply under the part application? And from my mom's marijuana charges, it ruined her life. From there, she fell heavily into alcohol and lost the house. I had to go move with my father, got kicked out of high school for getting into fight because my own life was crazy. I'd go home, you know, and, you know, mom be drunk every night.
But it's not in your mom's name, it's in your name?
It's in my name 100%. So my mom now lives in Florida. She doesn't live in New York. She had to move out of here. She just, you know, if she was still here today, she'd probably, you know, she'd probably be in jail, poor death. I watched so many people, you know, my friends, family, just had somebody die last week that worked for us, a doll guy, detail guy, overdosed on fentanyl. So I'm more than, you know, in this for the right reason. I want a safe, a safe source to get product, to get cannabis. And me personally, it helped me tenfold getting through all this stuff throughout my life, PTSD and everything. Lose my cousin, grown up, hardship. And my story's not any worse than anybody else's, but.
Question was about you, man. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else?
I'm Peter DiMigo. I'm dead. So we own, I live 85 Tuscan, Webster. But we own a building on the corner of Donovan and 250, 8 Main Street, and another address is 12 Main Street, I think. The bookstore and the garage sale store. So now, I'm not a marijuana smoker, but since he's doing this here, I've been checking it out a little bit. So we've been in East Rochester. They opted in. They were very tough. Where we can go, where you want it. Talk to people in Fairport. They have one square mile, right? And so yesterday, we get to deliver a car in Syracuse. So there's a marijuana shop or cannabis shop. I went there. Now I go into this place, and there's, it's 7:00 o'clock at night. There's seven people at the counters waiting on them. There's 25, 30 people that are buying it. They're not kids. I mean, they're my age, you know? They're older. So, you know, you're getting a person now who wants to buy it. They don't want to go to this side alley place to buy. He wants to buy legit stuff. And that's what this is for. You know, and if you look at the history, all the crimes were prohibition, drugs. How do you, how do you get rid of it? You legalize it, and you get rid of the criminals. Maybe, my nephew would still be alive today if he could have bought something too. But don't fentanyl it. So thank you.
Anyone else? And I will close the public comment portion of the meeting. We will move to regular discussion of the village business. First of all, we have a resolution to approve the claims and warrants. I have looked them over. Carl, you, you or Jerry? I ask for a motion to approve the payment of the claims and warrants.
I'll make that motion.
The board wants to look at it, so more than one people. Yep, that's right. Just to know, because I know there was a subject of, you know, thing being marketed towards children, restricted regulations, and rules that label, advertise these products.
Scott Samuel's for you, Dan.
No, there's nothing, it's just a package. So, thank you, guys.
Darrell comes back tomorrow.
I'm in, I'm in.
Want to see?
No.
I didn't get the second.
Jerry?
I second. You can't mess up. There's only two of us.
Hey, you guys always look if you want to do, trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye. Bill's approved. All right. Next, we have a resolution to set a public hearing on proposed local law number three, entitled The Village of Webster, New York Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code, the Uniform Code, and the State Energy Conservation Construction Code, the Energy Code. That's administration and enforcement local law. And this will be on Tuesday, the 26th, 2023, at 7:05 PM, according to that, as it's possible. We have a copy of that in front of you. And it's.
Sorry, I just want to make sure we have enough time.
So wait. And I may have missed this, but you moved the meeting from the 28th to the 26th?
Yes.
Correct. That was done last time.
That's what I was trying to ask you earlier, if we have enough time. If I send it Monday, it'll be in the view for Thursday. Well, Wednesday, but.
The public doesn't get it until Thursday.
Correct.
It's five days notice. That's the bare minimum, five days. So the answer is yeah. No, it's five days. It's not five business days. It's just five days notice.
Okay, we're good. Just double check.
Should we ask you to vote?
Okay. So we have a resolution. It's a public hearing on this, this bill, on Tuesday, this local law from 2026.
I second it. I'll second it.
Chair, Carl.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye. Okay. We have enough time. Just can go in and.
Yeah, are we setting the other public hearing at the same time?
Heather has a prepared resolution in her office, if you wanted.
Oh, this is to set a public hearing.
Sometimes you like to read all the whereas's, though.
I don't like to read them at all.
I was being a little facetious there. But it's basically, it's got different whereas's, but the bottom, the be resolved part is the same, except it's local law number four instead of local law. This, the code enforcement was local law number, proposed local law number three.
And 710.
Of 2023. This is proposed local law number four of 2020.
So I'll entertain a motion to set a public hearing on proposed law number four of 2023, which deals with the repeal of the local law that opted out of the sale, of a retail establishment for the sale of cannabis. Am I correct?
For 710.
For 710? The other ones is up at 15?
The one on 7:05.
So. Well, they're all, or as soon thereafter as the public can be heard, so.
Anytime we do it, too far, far.
But I'm guessing you're probably not going to get a lot of public comment on the code enforcement one.
I doubt it.
So probably doing this at 7, what did you say, 7:15? 710 is probably okay.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And just before we get off the, I did, on my phone, Google real quick, the town of Penfield does have some pretty comprehensive regulations about the time, place, and manner of cannabis retail dispensaries. They don't allow the on-premise consumption facilities, just the, so I will print those out and get them to all of you. So at least you have Aranacoye and.
Where is it? Find it.
Well, you just, you just Google town of Penfield, and then you go to their town of Penfield website, look for their town code. There's a search bar at the top. If you type cannabis in, it'll go to any of their local code that deals with cannabis, and you can find it. I just did East Rochester, doesn't have it, even though they allow it. They haven't adapted any time, place, and manner.
That is the wild west.
You just called it the wild west.
And you're Rochester? They're the wild east, I guess.
I'm sure that the mayor would appreciate that.
So what you could do that for, and I did that for the village of Fairport, they didn't have it. But those are the only ones I did. So you could go to, pick any town you want. And most, all of them have, just like the village, the E code is, pardon, is a link to their websites. Most, all of them have, just like the village, the E-code is part, is a link to their websites. And then once you get to the E-code, just in the search bar, type in cannabis, and you'll get whatever they have. But I'll get you, I'll get you Penfield.
Okay, thank you, man.